Kevin, can I come?
No.
All right. You're ready?
I'll get the door. Oh, yes, thank you.
All right. We call the meeting to order. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Kevin will not be joining us this evening. All right, we have the approval of the October 18th minutes. Do I have, are there any questions?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Carried. And the approval of the CSE/CPSA recommendations. I know Adam is not going to be here, but if there's any questions...
Sarah is here tonight.
Sarah is here, so...
I will move those.
Okay. Second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carried. Thank you, Sarah. See how quick that is? All right, we are up to public comment. Does anybody have any public comment? And do we have any students? Can you just introduce yourselves to the board?
Hi, I'm Christian Vitek.
Noah Condon.
All right. And you're here for the presentation though, right? Okay. Well, these are good. All right. We have more students?
Yeah.
Would you mind introducing yourself?
I'm Miranda.
Perfect time.
I'm Sophia.
Sophia Alston.
All right. And if you have any, if it's for government class or anything, you need your paper signed, just get that at the end of the meeting.
All right, thank you.
And was there any public comment?
I had one, I guess.
Sure.
Do you want me to come up?
Sure, if you can just sign in, thank you.
Sign in here?
Yep. That way Cory can record your name in the minutes.
All right. You can turn your life away.
John Smith doesn't work.
Not around here. We know you better.
All right. Me and my fiance, we were wondering what ever become of the incident with the terror threat or whatever.
Okay. Better?
So, with the student in school.
Yep. Do you want to touch on that? That was the, the parents had a concern, they wrote a letter to the school district on a student's letter.
Right. Things start to lead me and I'm like, okay, where was I during that time?
Well, yeah, it was like a pretty big deal. And then I stopped in and talked to somebody after school, the principal there, and he was going to follow up with it the next day. And I said it was something that was pretty important and that they should follow up with it, you know, today or whatever, the day it happened. And I feel like nothing was done, and we all feel like that.
Well, we, we did take immediate action. We took immediate action in a number of ways. We did contact law enforcement. We did have interaction with them and conversation with them. We did have, we did engage our own school staff and some county staff, and we actually also engaged the, the mental health clinic and, you know, for, for services through those folks. We, there was some discipline that was...
So, pretty much nothing was done.
Pardon me?
I mean, you contacted the people across the street.
Yeah, yeah.
And got a little bit of help.
We really took the, the time to, and it wasn't the sort of thing where we just, you know, it wasn't an average discipline issue for us. It was very unaverage. And, you know, we wanted to make sure that we contacted all the folks we could. I contacted the board immediately and let them know what was going on.
Well, they, the board didn't know until like, what, four or five days later?
Yeah, the day after.
Yeah, so, and then like I said, he wanted to address it the following day. And I think that's pretty important to be addressed that, you know, which I guess you ended up doing on that.
And I have to agree, I think, you know, what they, they did investigate it, and I think they investigated thoroughly with the help from law enforcement. The problem is, they are very limited on who they can share that information with, you know, because of, you know, the students are protected. But I, I think the board would agree that we are confident that it was addressed to the point that we can definitely address it.
Okay, well, it's still in school. You still, you know?
Yep.
I mean, back when I was in school, someone pushed a teacher, they got expelled for the whole year. Now you can say you can do that and you still remain in school and...
And unfortunately, because we cannot discuss, you know, a specific, you know, student, we, we can basically just continue to say it definitely was addressed.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm very, very confident in the way that we address it. And I do think, and we did, we did interact and, and asked for assistance from others besides those of us inside the school. We did, we did talk to various authorities out in other government areas for, for assistance. Some of them helped us quite actively, some of them helped us in consulting, you know, with us in a consulting fashion, advising with some things that we should do. I'm, I was very pleased with that. The only thing that I would add is that sometimes the types of information that go out are not necessarily the same types of information that are discovered through, through investigation, whether it be our investigation or other folks' investigation.
Right, I don't think the other half did their investigation thoroughly either because when we, I don't know, it's just, I don't think it was taken care of.
Well, I can't speak for them, but I can say that we were in contact with them a lot during the time that, that we were going through that.
Okay. Well, I feel like it didn't get, uh, didn't get solved. Like I said, the next day he was at a football game, felt bad, you know? It's like, anyhow, all right, well, I addressed it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I also just say a few things also that, you know, as long as we're on this subject? I hope with this being brought to you that it opens up your eyes to something that this can happen here in our school. You know, I mean, this is, this is big and it can happen. So, you need to get your ducks in a line and figure out what to do when this is presented to you because most of the time you don't get a heads up beforehand. This was a cry for help, and luckily he said something to somebody, and it was my daughter, and she came forward, thank God. You know, most of the times you don't get that, and it happens. So, I hope that if anybody ever comes to you again and presents anything, that there's, you have certain things in place to, you know, back it up with in order. You know, just like the backpacks, they come in, nobody checks backpacks, nobody checks anything when you come into school, he's still coming into school, he might not do it now, he might not do it next week, what about next month? You know, I mean, it still could happen. So, I feel that, I have different, I have different feelings about it. I don't think it was addressed the way it should have been.
Can I ask one? Do you think the see something, say something, and how they're teaching that in school was effective in this situation?
No.
So, coming, the student coming forward, as I understood, the student coming forward, I thought was a, it was a good representation of the students really trying to work together as a community and way they are, they're being developed in the middle school to teach respect and all those other things that they're doing and targeting with the kids. The see something, say something is the important lesson that we need to have reinforced.
It needs to be...
And I, I think we, we've received a lot of feedback from administrators on how they're addressing that and how they're doing that. But I think that's, that's our most proactive way of addressing it. And I, I looked at this as, as a student, seeing something and saying something, and I'm, I'm very grateful that she did.
Right.
And I think that we need to continue that ethic. And there are other things, safety wise, that we have been looking at for years, I know the board has for years, that also never leave our minds. So, I was here in 2004, so I'm aware that it can happen here, and it can happen fast. So, I don't think it leaves anybody's minds, it's in administration or school systems, so.
But it can happen, you know? I mean, you think that it's not going to happen in Walton, New York, but it can happen, and it can give other people ideas, you know? Nothing happened to this kid, what if I do this? You know, it's, it's, it's really hard as a parent to think, you know, I send my child to school thinking that they're safe, this is their safe place. Are they really safe? You know, are they doing everything that they're supposed to be doing, the teachers? A lot of kids don't want to come forward, they don't want to be a stench. And I wish that we could have more Aubries that come forward and blab out everything.
And parent reinforcement.
Right, parent reinforcement with you.
You know, more, I can't think of the word, more people that could come in and talk about bullying, you know, ideas, you know, I don't know what the answer is, but we really have to pay more attention to bullying and something that can push somebody to their breaking point.
Yeah, and it certainly, to reaffirm what Grayden said, to see something, say something, and it's not lost on a majority of the people at the table. Kevin's got kids in Great Graydon, I've got a kid, a daughter in the middle school and a son in the high school, Arnie, you know, we, we all have children who we're sending to this district and putting in these buildings, and we understand it's our responsibility to keep everyone's children safe. But as you, you go through and you think about possible solutions, then you also have to think about the unintended consequences, and, and these are discussions that are being happening all around the country, the state, and have been happening around this table, so.
I think we, at this table, try to set the general visions and guidelines, and I think we have a lot of confidence our administrators have been doing. And they've been, I agree, with these concepts, and all, when we're taking, say, you know, we do appreciate your comments, and we are...
Okay. Thank you. Jen, can you sign in?
I don't get enough of the people. That's why I made Cory do it. Well, you did fine, Jen. Thank you.
I don't know.
You don't have a problem with that.
Okay. Any other public comment? All right. Thank you. Okay, full discussion items. The one thing that we have on here is shared decision-making team. I think Marilyn and I both agreed that we were willing to serve on that. And then we also have another topic, walking at Townsend Elementary School from 6:00 to 9:00 PM Monday through Friday when school is in session. I had thought this was already taking place, but apparently it had stopped for a little while.
My understanding, the history that I've been told anyway, is that it, it used to occur, but there was a time, I think a couple of years back, where it was stopped partially because of staffing issues down at Townsend at that time. Those elements have changed a little bit, and as I understand it, it's a quarter-mile walk around the edge of all the halls.
Yeah, it is.
If you have to stay downstairs, and, you know, it's open to the board to make a decision as to whether or not they want to allow it downtown. Obviously, it's harder for some folks to get up here than it is to be down there. But as far as we know, we're able to offer it.
I think it's wonderful. I thought at one time that a lot of people had utilized, you know, the Townsend School.
A lot of people did use it until it was stopped.
Right. So, not having a YMCA or...
On a night like, you know, 8:30 or something like that, or there's a point where people can't come in, that sort of thing, but...
So...
Do we have confidence that there's coverage of staff now? Is that what... At this point, yes. Okay. I mean, if that changes, we'll come back. I mean, especially with winter coming, there's very limited opportunities involved itself.
Right.
As a community asset, if we can do that and do it safely, I think that should be done.
I agree.
Any objections? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We are up to 5A, the correspondence information. This is for the Workers' Compensation Self-Alliance or Self-Insurance Alliance meeting on Friday, November 9th, I believe. Butch and Mr. Thomas are planning on attending that? And that was it, right? I don't hear from anybody else, okay? All right, we are up to six presentations.
I'm Christian Vitek, I'm the president of our GSA, which is the Gay Straight Alliance. I would like to thank you guys for welcoming us tonight and allowing me to present. We also have with us tonight Ms. Neri and Mrs. Gilbertson, our two advisors, and our vice president, Noah Condon. So, the GSA first began on January 9th, 2017 with only eight students. It started as just a hangout for people that were different and just needed a place where we could all just talk and like, express our differences. It's hard being in a heteronormative world where there's just not many spaces, especially out here in Walton, where we can meet and talk and discuss issues that are near and dear to us. The GSA presented to the Board of Education on April 20th, 2017, and was approved as a club in Walton High School. At the end of 2017, we had 11 members and our two advisors. We keep growing. So, at the end of the 2018 school year, we had 18 members and two advisors, which is a huge growth and amazing for our school district and community. Currently, we have 19 members and two advisors, a small increase, but we are still growing. Our GSA for last year, these are our members and our officers, so Ashley Bush was our president, Marla Little, vice president, Taylor Gardner was secretary, Romani Snyder was our treasurer, Olivia Haven was public relations, and Karen Gilbertson and Ellen Neri were our advisors. A lot of our members last year were seniors, so we had a lot depart from our organization last year, and we were worried moving into this year, how we were going to operate with such a small group. But luckily, this year we had 13 new members join us, which is amazing, and I'm so thankful that people are so interested in our club and organization. A year interview, so this is, I believe, last year and a little bit into the year before. We attended the first annual Pride Fest, it was June 11th, 2017. To prepare for Pride Fest, members of the GSA made tie-dye t-shirts and a banner to participate in the first annual local Pride Fest in Oneonta, New York. The event included a rally, speakers, a march, and was followed by a Pride Festival in Neo-Wall Park. Right here, you can see that we were printed in the local newspaper as we marched in the Pride Parade. For the past two years, we have attended the SUNY Pride Conference. On October 27th, 2017, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven members attended the conference entitled "Activism: Creative Expression for LGBTQIA, Resistance, and Healing." This year, I was lucky enough to attend along with Noah and Louisa and Ms. Neri, and the conference was titled "Pride Without Borders: Sharing Our Stories Beyond the Rainbow." It's very educational, and like I said before, it is a space where we can get together and we can discuss ideals, policies, politics, that are near and dear to us, and it's very important to us. Last year, I, along with other members of GSA, were lucky enough to attend a high school gender and sexuality sociology class. Five members of the GSA attended the class lecture at SUNY Oneonta to hear from two guest speakers who shared their personal stories of transitioning genders. In April of 2018, we had a social event, and we went out to dinner and movie to see Love Simon. The importance of Love Simon is, it was one of the first movies to have a openly gay teenager star. So, that visibility is very important to us as a community and in the current political climate. Last year, we were able to finish our GSA mural that promotes love, acceptance, and diversity. The flags listed within the letters are different flags that represent the letters of our community, and at the bottom it says "Respect All Genders, All Identities, and All People." This mural isn't just exclusive to the LGBTQ+ community, but it also shows how we are incorporating allies into our work. The Safe Space stickers were available to the staff for the last two years, and they can take one and display it in their window to educate students that their classroom is a safe space, that members of the LGBTQ+ community are welcome there, and it's a safe place for them to discuss any issues or problems they may be facing. Last year, we hosted our first school-based event, it was the Day of Silence. And the Day of Silence was to share a voice for those who have been silenced in the past. Many people in the LGBTQ+ community feel silenced, and this was a great way to show an act of silencing ourselves within the school community and within the school day to show how many people are affected by harassment, bullying, all of that. We had 32 participants. In a small school like ours, 32 people not talking for a day is crazy. It's like, it's crazy. And myself included.
Christian not talking for a day.
I know, Christian not talking for a day, that's even crazier. Because I love to talk, as you guys probably know. So, we had the 32 participants, and we had 50 posters of support. Throughout the week leading up to the event, we had a table outside of the lunchroom that, what was it exactly? It was why, why we felt we needed to speak up. And it's kind of like ironic because we're saying why we need to speak up by silencing ourselves. So, I understand that there is irony in that, and a lot of people were thrown off by that at first, but if you think deeper into it, it does make sense because silencing yourself does make such a huge impact. So, yeah, that was the Day of Silence. This year, we introduced Ally Week. Now, this was very important to our organization because one of our goals for this year was to relay the message that allies are very important to the work we are doing here and in the world. We need allies, not just the LGBTQ+ community. We need them to speak up, speak out, and help us make change. So, this was very important for us. And we also had 50 posters of support for this. We tabled, and it was "How You Are an Ally." So, yeah, that was Ally Week. Unit Day was a very big one. We partnered with Student Council and Middle School Student Council, and students participated by writing down one action they will take to make a difference, to reduce bullying, promote kindness, acceptance, and inclusion. So, first period, a couple weeks ago, last week, students wrote on these footprints what we can do to make the school a better environment for, and a better safe environment. The footprints, we have them all stacked up, they are going to be displayed throughout the school as a visual reminder that every step you take matters.
I like the one you chose.
Yeah.
Thank you.
See something, say...
See something, say something.
It's right there.
Blazes directly into what just happened. This is very important because it touches on a more legal aspect of the issues of the LGBTQ+ community. Our advisor, Mrs. Gilbertson, on June 18th, attended a presentation at the Delaware County Courthouse hosted by the Richard C. Phil, uh, last name, do you know? LGBTQ Commission of New York State Courts. The purpose of the presentation she attended was to educate and share information to promote equal participation and access throughout the court systems by all persons regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression. Speakers included, I'm not going to butcher their names, so they're listed right there. Mrs. Gilbertson, would you like to say anything more about that?
I think that's, that's good.
No? Okay. So, the positive changes that we've already enacted in our school is increased GSA members, preferred names in programs, which was huge. Gender-neutral bathrooms have been labeled preferred names for emails, which was also a huge hurdle that we had to face. Preferred names in the yearbook, also a huge hurdle. Safe space changing stalls in the locker room, and increased open lines of communication throughout the student body, staff, and our community. Looking forward to this year, we, I tried last year to get us a field trip to the Stonewall Inn in New York City, it just didn't work out, but I am confident that we will be able to complete that by this year. We also want to bring speakers in to discuss diversity, acceptance, and tolerance, which we are already working on. We have one planned for December, I believe.
January.
January. We want to continue to recruit members to join GSA, including allies. We want to improve curriculum to incorporate LGBTQ issues and topics. This was one of my biggest ones going into this year. Throughout my years at Walton, the education kind of lacked on LGBTQ issues. I know they aren't as important as some of the things other people might think they need to teach, but I do believe, especially in health classes, they need to be addressed. And I would also like to see LGBTQ+ history included in history classes. We also want to do another school-based art project, just like our mural, and obviously fundraising because we need money. Again, the GSA would like to thank the Board of Education, administration, staff, students, and our community for their support. So, thank you guys for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Couldn't imagine being silent all day.
Right? It was like a big deal.
All right, let's see here. We are up to seven additions to the agenda. We do not have anything. Take care. All right. The consent agenda. We have the financial reports, the transfer of funds, declared surplus, this is for books, right? Textbooks, right. We have an established scholarship.
Do you want to talk a little bit more about this?
Yes. The, let's see, we have, pull this up, the Douglas Bartlett Scholarship Award and the Clarence and Andrea Lepar Annual Scholarship for Advanced Professional Education. I think that is amazing. The anonymous donor for the Douglas Bartlett Scholarship Award also has made a request asking that one day during the 2018-19 school year to be declared an honorary day for Mr. Douglas Bartlett. And we have, let me get to my paper more. Sorry. I know you guys have it up on your screen, I didn't get it up yet. But this is a $5,000...
One time.
One time.
And I think it's important to note that Mr. Bartlett, Douglas Bartlett, was a teacher who really impacted this former student's life. I mean, it's a student from back in 1969 who graduated from WCS, who, you know, is giving $5,000 in the name of, of Mr. Bartlett. So, it's significant, you know, paying it back for the experience he had with that educator. So, it's a testament to the profession and how you can touch somebody's life, and, you know, a former alum giving back.
Right.
So, we appreciate that.
This can be used, it's the single one-time payment, but it can be used for anyone that may be going to college or a VOT.
Right.
So, that's, that's huge. And then we have Clarence and Andrea Lepar. Now, that one is going to be put through the regular scholarships.
That'll be a reoccurring.
Reoccurring one, okay. All right. Did anybody have any questions on the scholarships? All right, and then we have, we have a resignation, Christopher Munyon, food service helper. And then we have the personnel appointments, extracurricular advisor for middle school FFA, Hannah Guptow. We have a substitute mail carrier, Norma Murphy, substitute teacher, Linda Belmont. Linda Belmont actually is returning. Substitute school monitor... Substitute School Monitor, Gail Barnhart. And Substitute Teacher Aid and School Monitor, Bridget Schmidt. And then Substitute Teacher Aid and School Monitor, Lori Courtney. And then we have the Athletic Recommendations. And that is it. Do we have a motion to accept the consent? Can I make a motion? Second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. All right, number nine, new business. We have accepting donations. Once again, we have received $470 in donations in memory of Valerie Vogel to the Townsend Elementary School from various donors. We have $100 from Frank Ward to the Walton FFA Chapter for jackets. $850 proceeds from a spaghetti dinner donation to the Walton FFA Chapter.
That's 840.
840, sorry. I knew that didn't sound right. That's huge for spaghetti dinner. That's a lot. $70 from parents, supporters to the Varsity Club. And $16.50 from the faculty to the speech and debate forensics. Do we have a motion to accept the donations?
Motion.
Second?
A second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. All right, and then this is 9B, Declare Appreciation Day. And this would be in honor of Mr. Bartlett Day. The suggested day would be when the DCMO BOSI's Career and Technical Education Program students receive their awards. That would be on June 17th, 2018. Does anybody have any questions on that?
I move it.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
I heard from the...yeah, 2019.
Yeah, I could say, 2018's already gone.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm just reading. Sorry, 2019. Thank you, bud.
Sounds better.
You made Cory's...
Well, you know, and those students are probably saying, "Ah, now they establish this." Very nice. Do we make a motion for that? Second? Oh, you already got that? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. And then we have Personnel Appointments. This is for the position John Jackson, Building Maintenance Mechanic, to be in line with civil service to the position of Building Maintenance Mechanic II. Correct? And do we have a motion to accept that?
Motion.
Second? Second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right. Old business, 10A. This is to establish the...actually, this was supposed to be done at the reorg. And we just...
We did, but I left Mr. Wood off of the committee, for the audit committee.
So this will go back to that appointment. So it'd be Sandra Gregory?
Right, she was appointed last meeting as the community member.
Member. And then Paul Wood, Board President and Board Vice President. Are there any questions? Do we have a motion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. All right, we are up to...
Another meeting for you, Paul.
We are up to administrative remarks.
As I've done in the past, I will defer to my team and see if they want to give us three to five. So, Mike?
October is always busy. We can't believe we're already in November. We were saying 15 days in November, 15 days in December because we have all those vacations going on. Had a successful Halloween parade. The sky gods were with us and then suddenly it was beautiful after the prediction of rain. And we just don't want to rain on Halloween. We're just steadily working on making adjustments. We made...we have standard-based report cards. And we had a couple of grade levels made some minor tweaks to that because it's a living document. So sometimes after a year spent teaching, they say, "You know what? I want to shift this standard to the second marking period and move this one to the first" just because they see the flow of the year. So we made some adjustments there. So I'm happy that we have a report card like that, that we can make minor alterations if we want to. We had one of our reading teachers, Mackenzie O'Hara, went... She got a scholarship and went to a reading conference in Connecticut for three days. And you'll hear more about that. I'm asking PJ to maybe put something together for the website. So we're proud of that accomplishment. And we've got people, we've got, gosh, professional development going all the time. And I think those are the big things. And we're into November, which is very surprising to be the surprise in school year of the year.
One thing I want to...Marilyn and I were discussing this this morning also is we were trying to think back how many years our local merchants have allowed our elementary students to paint their windows during Halloween.
That goes back to the 50s because they were doing it when I was in school because I know that...I live seven miles out of town and the parents didn't run me to town unless you had to go. So I never got to paint windows, but it was happening back in the 50s.
As long as I've been here, I've been there every year and it's a cool thing.
It is, it truly is. And I look forward to seeing, you know, what's been painted and then what windows are being used. You know, it's very nice, very nice to see. And I like seeing all the kids down there and, you know, having their little, you know, social gatherings as they're painting. It's neat to watch.
We have a thing today, we had this woman, her name is Lori McIntosh. She is...she writes grants and she does workshops with kids. She came last year and did a one-day workshop. And she brings her guitar and she talks about the watershed and things like that. Well, she got a grant at the end of last year. She had written a grant, she called me up and said, you know, she'd like to apply this grant to Walton. And it was a songwriting workshop. So she's been in the elementary school two different times, two different days to meet with the third grade. And all four classes wrote original songs about the watershed. And this afternoon at about 1:10, we got the kindergarten, first and second graders. And the third graders got up there and sang their songs in the auditorium. So they had the...the younger kids were in attendance and they had an audience. And they sang all four of those original songs. And she talked about the watershed, conservation and earth. And all the songs were unique and written by the kids. I mean, she kind of brain steered with the guitar. She has the chords that she wants to play. But the kids wrote the lyrics and participated in that. And we got a kind of a cool little thing. PJ recorded it, probably going to put it up on the website. I just thought that was kind of nice.
Now, will you...elementary school, again, second graders be doing their harvest dinner?
Yeah, they're going to do Thanksgiving piece that's coming up.
Thanksgiving, nice.
And then Beth Allen and I are looking at the end of...after Thanksgiving, we're going to have our first Ag Club meeting. And we've already got an agenda kind of set in place for that. And I've gotten so many, so many offers of volunteering resources, volunteering seeds, volunteering time. So we're going to...hopefully, I don't want to overuse certain people, but throughout the year, we'll probably work up a system. So certain volunteers, organizations, community groups, stores will be able to participate through the year.
Nice.
And we're going to get started right after Thanksgiving, our first meeting.
And to tie it in with the high school, I seen on the website that the FFA students were actually going to the elementary school to teach them. That's amazing.
Yeah, she's doing it a couple of times in the fall, a couple of times in the spring to go into classrooms and do an Ag lesson, Ag Education Day lesson. So there's a lot of synergy there.
Yep. Good.
Well, Tim, from the middle school, Halloween was...the Halloween get-together was great on that Friday night when everybody got in to participate. It was all levels of Walton working together. You had the High School Drama Club doing some face painting and helping kids with the makeup for their costumes so they didn't have to wear masks, which can make it hard to see in a...it's kind of an unsafe way. But going with the makeup, it was just...it was tremendous. They put together a haunted house that I was afraid to go into. And it was really a horrific success. They had fun. They had fun. The PTA pitched in and sold food and provided...we had lots of things going on. They were dancing, they almost got me to dance in the gymnasium. They had music going all the time, almost. It's like when I used to jump, both feet would get off the ground. But now, one foot, that's my job. It was a good...it was really fun. I wore dark glasses and I had a parade that had dreadlocks hanging out the back, sort of a Bob Marley approach, which isn't my usual attire. Let's see. We've had a couple of incidents that evolved, that happened. And teachers, counselors, this team of administrators got together and we worked through things. One of the keys was when you deal with something that's a crisis, I think fast action is important. Something happens at 8:05 in the gym and at 8:30, people are seeing, for health and safety reasons, the nurse. Things progress from there. That wasn't addressed too much tonight, I don't think. And I don't think it will be. I think we've handled the investigation of certain things very carefully. Thanks, thanks really. And I point down the line to everyone who took part in that. I get to take the credit, of course, for everything. And I thank you for giving me that. It really deserves to go to a lot of people. Let's see, the 15th and 30th, Thursday, the 15th and the 30th is a Friday. We have the half day. The teachers are setting up their schedules for kids that they like to... They want to talk with parents about how they're doing. On the 12th, I'm going to blast out emails and... What do you call it, a global announcement? So that the parents will know that we're having it, remind them that we're having it. And they can pick times and call the school and we'll set them up to come in and talk with the teachers. I think it's a really great idea. There are a couple of things going on in the morning that are nice that have to do with the Alternative to Violence, which is an absolutely great program. But they're going to be doing it first in the middle school...
No, they do it...
In the elementary first, then on the 30th in the middle school. And then later on in December, they'll do it, I think, just before what Vestal calls the winter break, but I think we call it the Christmas break. They're going to do it then. The program itself was sensational. I saw pictures of kids working in groups. I saw the kids coming in from the three schools that participated with us. They came into the cafeteria and they said, "Wow, this is a really great school." They have two TVs in the corners, which are the time and temperature, I think. It was a good time. And we were able to see some children interact who didn't always have any alternatives to violence. And to see them participate and, you know, they... That was just a good thing. Teachers teach and they're going at it full blast. Sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade. The classes are moving along well. I get to walk around and do those quick start... The quick looks of the class and size things up and write comments. But we're about to begin our formal evaluations, which are announced. And then see how many I can get in. I don't want to say there's something else that occupies a lot of my time, but discipline, you always have a disciplinary. Sometimes you don't have a middle school principal. But those things have to be taken care of. We want our kids to be strong, safe and free. Strong, safe and free. And that involves having some boundaries. Wonderful parental cooperation on those things. It's just great, I've enjoyed it. I probably use most of your time.
If you deal with three to five on average, then you can skip the...
Look, I have to follow him.
I'm going to sit on the other end.
You could be first.
I have a slightly different view on Halloween. From my high school experiences, if you get through Halloween and there's no problems, you breathe a sigh of relief. And I was very pleasantly surprised that we had a pretty solid group of people that dressed up and celebrated the holiday. And we had no major issues at all. So it was a good day. Better than some others, to piggyback on the discipline piece. But it was a good, solid day. Kids enjoyed themselves. And they were...there was a lot more goodwill than in many ways that I would have expected. And it was good. I was very appreciative of it. Like, Tim, I'm working on, continuing to work on dealing with walkthroughs with staff. And IO2 will be starting a formal evaluation cycle very soon with people that I've already through walkthrough experiences with. I prepared the staff for that to give them some perspective on it. And so we're working in that direction. Generally speaking, things are improving. We have a lot to do. I mean, there are things that need attention and we're working on it pretty diligently. Tim touched on some of the issues as well. But I had a milestone occurrence this week. I get out, do bus duty in the morning, I say hello to the kids. Not all of them say hello back. I sort of like key tabs of, you know, this is like a 40% day, maybe this is 45. I actually think I broke 50 today. And in particular, I now have kids that are starting to say hello to me before I say hello to them. And I know there's like a half a dozen, you know. It took me a month to get one. So, I mean, I think that's... I said my piece.
Bus safety.
Yeah, I'm averaging now.
Bus safety. You took her on bus safety.
Oh, yeah, I forgot, we had bus drill and we had our lockdown drills that we went through. And they worked out pretty well. Credit on the lockdown in particular should go to our safety coordinator. Would you like to take a bow?
Team effort, team effort.
Well, I wasn't...I didn't do anything exciting for Halloween. I was...well, but it was exciting for me. I was at the Reading League Conference in Syracuse last week looking at the evidence-based methods of teaching reading and improving literacy. And I honestly think that we're on the right track and we're doing the right thing. And in fact, BOSI's, DCMO BOSI's have put together a list of... We put together a list, a team of MTSS team. We put together a list of screeners that we would like to use right through the...from K through 12 to screen children who are having difficulty with reading. And so BOSI's have put together all the vendors that we requested. And we're going for a day of...a day there of sampling all the different screeners that are available to us. So that we can choose one for Watson before we present it to, you know, to grade level leaders and to department chairs so they can make their final decision on what we want to use. So it was absolutely phenomenal to meet some of...some people, you know, authors that I've admired for years. And to actually get to meet them was wonderful. So, I don't know where I was going with that, never mind. But then the week ended up with McKinny Vento. And so I've updated the knowledge that I have with McKinny Vento. We have to go to that training every year. And then this year, this week, brought in Lori Strong, who is going to be working with the elementary school and with grade six. And she had the first of her sessions with grade two this week. And I've just come from a grade level leader meeting. And the grade, grade two teachers absolutely loved what she had to say. She was very inspiring, she answered all their questions. And they had a lot of questions about... And they had a lot of questions about, specifically about teaching reading. And it all fitted in beautifully with the Reading League and it just, it was just marvelous. And I had Gretchen Oliver, Dr. Gretchen Oliver came and worked with the social studies team in the high school. And what we're doing there is looking at how we can really expand the experience of high school students in the classroom, looking at high leverage practices, practices that, that really are evidence-based and work in the classroom that we need to kind of improve or enrich our, the experience of children. And the social studies team were wonderful and took on board all that Gretchen was, was offering to them. And in December, she's going to move with the science team. So we'll kind of go through that and improve. And we know that we're pretty good because we got our scores from state ed. And our children are better than average, or we are better than average at educating our children, getting them ready for college career readiness. We've got a higher score than the state average. So we want to, we want to keep going.
Yeah, nice.
Sarah, would you like to add anything at all? You don't have to, of course.
Well, it's really easy for me to say the special education department's running smoothly, but I'm not in Adam's shoes and I don't see those little glitches that need to be worked out along the way. From my perspective, everything is running smoothly. In another month, we'll really start moving, doing the testing for the reevaluations in middle school and high school for CSE and for 504 students. And I do have to say this on a personal note, when I first started here through DCSEs, we did have the measure, those three tiers that then I've been able to order tests. And we really have a great kind of test kit, you know, cabinet that has the gold standards. So I can really differentiate, look through, see, you know, what those really specific areas are of need. And it's been wonderful, I mean, I appreciate that, you know, with all that approval. Yes, order this and I explained why. So it's made my job easier, but more importantly, it's allowed us to tease out very specific things to get better interventions. So I do appreciate that we have all those things now. Because from my perspective, it's not smoothly, but then things get, you know, because we have all those final little fixes along the way that I don't see.
Right, thank you.
So I'll just quickly go through a couple other items. Tim mentioned that, or Mike mentioned a short number of days that we have in November. Monday is one of them, this coming Monday. We were celebrating Veterans Day, of course, and so we'll be close for that. BOSI's legislative working, we, I went to a subcommittee, BOSI's subcommittee, where we were talking about some of the legislative pieces that we might really try to focus in on in the coming year. We, we, we have a frustration every once in a while, you get 10 items and you feel like you're really not giving attention to all of them. So we really tried to, so we brought it down in conversation to like three items specifically, one of them being equitable funding issues where we also talked about, what relates to that is foundation aid. We're looking for a whole harmless piece on that so that school districts that might, through the formula, and rural districts fall into this potentially. The formula might actually say, well, you should get less aid, less foundation aid next year. And so we're, we're looking to try to convince our legislators to have a whole harmless with respect to our foundation aid. Second one was just a general support for rural economic growth and revitalization. There's actually, we're, we're trying to put together some studies to talk about what are some of the wonderful things that we have to offer in this sort of, in a rural area? And for employment and to assist with, maybe if, if companies, large and small, are considering coming into this area, we want to be able to get on board with that and say, you know, we can, we can give you some good information, we can change our programs in order to assist you with getting workers, you know, for, for your employment and things of that sort. So we've got a program that's starting up, we're in our infant stages with that. But we want to generate with the legislators this notion of, of, you know, we're on board with trying to, all the schools in this BOSI's are on board trying to help, do our part to help revitalize rural New York. And then the third piece is, is a little more budget, budgetary piece. And that is for, for years, there's, there's been a cap on aid, BOSI's aid for BOSI's teachers that, like, if we, if we hire a BOSI's teacher and we spend, let's say, I'm just going to make this up, $45,000 for, for a teacher in a BOSI's program, the most that we're supposed, that we're allowed to claim for BOSI's aid purposes is $30,000. And that's been a cap that was instituted at the state level for years and years and years and years. And we're really trying to fight to try to at least raise that cap a little bit simply because prices have gone up and aids have gone up and, or potentially up and that sort of thing. So we're trying, so we're really focusing on those three pieces rather than, as I say, going with a whole litany of 10 items to our, to our legislators. And those of you who are willing to come to this legislative breakfast in December on...
I think the legislative breakfast is February.
Oh, the one, yes, that's the one in February, there was a luncheon that we talked about before. But yeah, legislative breakfast is in February. You'll hear us talking, focusing on just those three, the three items, I think. In our last meeting, there was someone who asked about the director of PE and my response to that individual was, from the gallery, was that we don't have a director of PE as yet. That remains, but I've been doing some investigation with the possibility of a shared director of PE that's certainly allowed. And that's one, you know, so I'm trying to contact a couple of my neighbor superintendents and see if we can work something out that way. So we're still working on that, still don't have it, but I just want you to do, I want to do an update for everybody.
Thank you.
Budget calendar, I have a proposal here for budget calendar. It is just a proposal and, but I wanted to start getting everybody's juices flowing with respect to thinking about dates in the future. And most of what you have here are dates that we already have as far as board meetings are concerned. But there are also some deadline dates in there that are required by the state as far as submission of certain information and when we have to have our budget ready by so that it's published appropriately and those kinds of things. I would, I would call your attention to a couple items that I have on here. And again, this is proposed, I'm not actually asking for any action right now. But, you know, I'm only anticipating that the governor's going to provide his budget. He sometimes has it done by middle of January and sometimes takes a little while. So that's a floating date if you. Offering two nights during 2019 for a community forum so that our public can come in and chat with us about their vision for Walton and, and some thoughts with respect to budget. So I'm offering up those two dates. Again, we could move those, but I wanted to put them in here to get you, get you thinking about it. And I think those are the biggest pieces that I want to call attention to. Most of the other pieces, it probably caught me on one date that we corrected and, and a time. And you can see the corrections on there. But there you are. And we can think about that for maybe the next meeting or the meeting after even, okay? Someone mentioned AVP, I think it was Tim, mentioned AVP earlier in his comments. The folks with the Alternative to Violence Project, they have a rather nice list of activities that are going on for the coming year. Some of them are during school and some of them are not. I have been approached by the, the folks with the AVP asking if they could, they could raise AVP to a club status. And I've got some data that I'm going to share with you. I don't, I'm not ready to share that data with you right now, but I, but I've asked them for some data. We've had some of these conversations before on some other things earlier this year. And I'm, you know, I'm asking specifically for, you know, what is it that you're doing? And how long is this going to take? And, you know, how many kids are we talking about and that sort of thing? So I appreciate Tim's comments about that because that kind of supports work with this program as well. But I'm going to be giving you some information on that, just letting you know a little bit ahead of time. Couple other quick things, I had a great time carving pumpkins with the UPK in Mrs. Gates' class last week. So I got my Halloween fix as well, everybody. Community group met today, we had our second meeting. I think, you know, Marilyn was there. I think that we got into a long conversation about assessment in the, in the district and town of Walton. Not necessarily just with respect to the school, but with everybody, all the other budgets that are out there, you know, which are connected with that. That was probably the highlight and the longest bit of conversation that we had. Safety team, we met, Rick ran his first safety team meeting, had a table full of folks to react to the lockdown and the fire drills. And Rick explained to us a number of the security and safety pieces that we have been putting in to our buildings for the last several, couple of years, actually, that we've been working on some of these things. And maybe since Rick's over there, maybe I can ask him to bring some of those pieces out a little bit more at another meeting at another point because we are concerned about safety, conversation from before. And there are some things that we have been doing, but some of them may be a little bit more behind the scenes and we expect that they're done and we don't, you know, and they are done and we are using them, but we don't necessarily bring them out to the, to the public. So we'll maybe try to do that at a future time. Negotiations wise, I had my first official meeting with WESPA last night. As I mentioned before, it was, it was largely a meet and greet. I got to see the players at the table, they got to see me, we had a nice conversation. We did not exchange any, well, I won't say we, we didn't exchange proposals. They had some proposals from before that they wanted to go over and give me some history on, which I appreciated very much. But we didn't have, I didn't have anything to offer to them. And I told them that ahead of time, that, you know, I really wanted to hear their position on things and they, that's what they did. So we have another meeting set up for later on in the month. And so we're off and running with that. WTA negotiations, we have a meeting that's scheduled for this coming Thursday, so no change since the last time we met. We met as a board, I mean, but we have a session coming up on Thursday. That's it for me. I do, would like to request an executive session to talk about a student issue and a, and an employee issue. And I would also request that Mark remain briefly for a portion of that.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion.
And this would be just what was stated, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Do we need to approve something from you? No, we don't, okay.
Sign off.
All right, very good.
Posed, carried. Okay, and we'll sign your forms.